We're listening through Oshkosh media. We are pleased to have citizens participate in our local government, so welcome to one and all. Would you please take the roll?
Pansky?
Here.
Crowsey?
Here.
Peck?
Here.
Paul Mary?
Here.
Allison Osby?
Here.
Herman?
Here.
Cummings?
Here.
President Seven?
Would you all please stand while Councilmember Pansky does the invocation and then the pledge of allegiance.
We are mindful of the blessings of liberty that we have in this nation. May our decisions tonight improve the quality of life in our city and for our residents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening we have a presentation from a youth coalition called Rethink about smoking in our parks. So would you ladies come forward, please? If you introduce yourself.
Sure. I'm Grace Halsett. I'll be a sophomore at West next year. Been up here for a rethink for four years and I live at 1141 West Sixth Ave., Oshkosh.
Thank you.
I am Jamie Constantine. I'm a recent graduate of Oshkosh West. I've been involved with the Rethink Youth Coalition for five years and I live at 1141 West Sixth Ave., Oshkosh.
And my name is Lindsay Erickson. I'm a health educator with Rethink, the Lake Shore Tobacco Prevention Network and Winnebago County Health Department. I live at 240 Algoma Boulevard, Department 310, in Oshkosh.
Thank you.
So, we're here today to talk about tobacco-free parks within Oshkosh. First, a little bit of little background. So, the Rethink Youth Coalition is made up of youth within the community and it's an arm of the Health Department looking to get youth involved within the community and spreading healthy practices. We're also all members of FACT, a youth-created and youth-led movement throughout Wisconsin focused on informing their, youth informing their peers about tobacco and then also marketing strategies and how to avoid that. In 2001, a group of youth realized that tobacco was an issue within their communities and so they got together and created this movement to see how they're able to combat tobacco. And so, one thing that we do is factivism. So, that's fact and activism together. And one of those factivisms is cigarette butts. So, here you can see we've gone to the Riverwalk, Little Oshkosh, Opera House Square. We have gone to other areas as well. These are just some photos here. And we've seen that it's been a continual problem with cigarette butts. As you can see here, we have eight mason jars filled with cigarette butts that we picked up in Oshkosh Parks. These are not all the mason jars. We have had to throw some out because of the decomposing or the smell that they have caused. But, we've noticed that it's been a continual problem. And then, our most recent cigarette butt pickup, we did invite all of the city council and also the entire Parks Board. And Jay Crowsey was kind enough to join us. And we spent 10 minutes walking through and around Little Oshkosh and we picked up over 100 cigarette butts. It was just 10 minutes, five people leisurely walking. And so, we've seen that's clearly a continual problem and it's causing litter and other problems within our parks. And so, that's what we're here to talk about today.
So, tobacco-free parks make sense. Eighty-three percent of Wisconsinites don't smoke and the 17% of Wisconsinites who do smoke go throughout their day performing various activities where they're not allowed to smoke. And many concerns about tobacco use in parks include litter, secondhand smoke, and kids and animals coming into contact with cigarette butts. They also make sense because parks are healthy places where you should be, are places for the entire community to enjoy exercise, relaxing, being safe, enjoying nature. And these are various places in Oshkosh that also have tobacco-free parks. And other park policies in Oshkosh prohibit smoking in the Little Oshkosh playground. And I know that we saw pictures before of our cigarette butts in Little Oshkosh. And there is a sign at Little Oshkosh saying there is no smoking, but clearly people do smoke because we picked up cigarette butts. But, we think that if we had this ordinance and there was more signs consistently around the park, that people would be aware that they cannot smoke.
So, to address some of the myths with tobacco-free parks, many of the concerns that we've heard about have been related to enforcement. So, how to enforce a tobacco-free parks ordinance? We did speak with the Chief of Police in Oshkosh and also I contacted the Mayor of Wisconsin Dells, who they've had a tobacco-free parks ordinance since 2015. And both said that enforcement isn't an issue. Really, it's treated just like any other complaint related to litter or when dogs are allowed in the park. It's a low-level call. And we would want to have adequate education, six months to a year to provide education before an ordinance is in effect, to make sure that all residents are informed and are aware of the ordinance so that enforcement shouldn't be an issue.
And then, another common myth that we've run into is people have the right to use tobacco when and where they want to. This is not true. Tobacco users are not protected people. However, everyone does have the right to breathe clean air. This is part of the Smoke Free Air Law that was passed seven years ago going statewide. And it guarantees that everyone has the right to breathe clean air. And so, since tobacco users are not protected people, this is not a human's rights issue. This is a public health issue. And then, also restricting tobacco will lead to decreased use of Oshkosh parks. The majority of our citizens within Oshkosh do not use tobacco. And then, also, Oshkosh citizens use parks to have an active, safe time with their family. And tobacco use is not a safe activity or a healthy activity, which is what our parks are meant for.
The benefits of having a tobacco-free parks ordinance would be to remote healthier communities, reduce harmful cigarette litter, prevent secondhand smoke exposure, increase safety and well-being of people who attend the parks, be consistent with the policies for school grounds and athletic facilities, and then it'd be a positive role model if, you know, little kids are in the park and they don't see anyone smoking, they should have a reason why they don't smoke.
So, some best practice for tobacco-free parks ordinances. So, ordinances are best when they include all city-owned and managed parks, beaches, and boat launches, just to create consistency so there's no confusion about what's covered and what's not. Including all tobacco products, including smokeless tobacco and any electronic devices like e-cigarettes. Again, to create consistency, no confusion about what types of products are covered. Posting signage near main entrances, parking lots, recreational centers, to make sure that, again, with education and signage, people are aware of the ordinance. And providing that time for community education before an ordinance is in effect so that we can make sure everyone's on board with it. That can be done through event announcements, flyers, local media, et cetera.
And then, here's our contact information if you have questions after this meeting today. And then, if you have any further questions right now, we'd be happy answering any concerns or questions.
I just wanted to add a comment to this. I enjoyed your presentation tonight and I'm very encouraged to see people of your generation coming out and showing support in the city. I mean, a lot of times it's like, people say the younger generations don't care. A lot of times, it's the older generations that feed into the stereotypes and are annoyed by the younger generations for some reason or another. As a parent of three small kids myself, I obviously support this. I mean, I want to save heaven for my kids. And when I was done by you guys helping pick up, there was little kids coming up and trying to help us. So, little kids understand what's going on. So, they want a clean place to play too. So, thank you for stepping up and being a good part of the city.
Thank you for that comment. And then, also, thank you for your time tonight. I forgot to say that earlier. It does mean a lot for us being able to come here today and be on your agenda.
So, I have a question. When you were looking at the ordinances of these other cities that have that, do they by chance also include the city sidewalks? Just curious.
Not currently. We have looked at other ordinances that cities have passed and not currently the sidewalks are not included.
Thank you.
However, we have looked at other ordinances such as Appletons and we strive to have a more comprehensive and a stronger ordinance than our neighbors because we're a good city and we're able to do it and we're able to have a healthy community. So, covering sidewalks would be of interest for our citizens. We would definitely see if that's something we could strive for.
Thank you.
As the liaison to the Parks Board, the Parks Director's in the back of the room. If you'd like to talk to him briefly, or I can recommend to get it on the Parks Board's agenda. And we can, if you can get us more copies of your PowerPoint, that would allow the Parks Board to at least bring it up for a discussion and then possibly take a vote on moving it forward or however the Parks Board would like to look at it. Now, Parks Board is made up of citizens of Oshkosh with one council liaison and then Parks Board's staff members. Okay? You may want to add to your PowerPoint presentation that there is no smoking allowed in the Menominee Park Zoo currently. Are there any other comments or questions from councilmembers? Well, thank you very much for all of your hard work and a very nice presentation. Next on the agenda is a public hearing. This week requires three readings prior to a vote. Resolution 17-356, approved final resolution for special assessments. Contract number 17-19 Aviation Business Park Water Main Loop. Resolution 17-356, approved final resolution for special assessments. Contract number 17-19 Aviation Business Park Water Main Loop. Third and final reading, resolution 17-356, approved final resolution for special assessments. Contract number 17-19 Aviation Business Park Water Main Loop. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this resolution? I see anyone coming forward. Bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Yeah. I have a couple of questions. Mr. Roloff, you and I've had some discussion about the Water Main Loop. I am a little concerned because I'm aware that Winnebago County has been dragging their feet on putting in the taxiway to the Aviation Park. We seem to be meeting all our obligations of what the agreement was to have this Aviation Park between the city and the county. Just wondering why we're continuing to move forward when the county hasn't done anything.
We certainly are concerned about that. And I've expressed my concerns to Mr. Harrison. We're going to be meeting with him in the next couple of weeks to talk about what we can do to get that taxiway done. Because that was part of the whole concept of the Aviation Park. And this week, we're, as we can hear, we're entertaining people in the aviation industry and trying to sell the park is going to be a difficult thing to do. We can certainly, with the water service we currently have, we can meet most of the needs. The water loop will enable us to not only meet the needs in this park, but also get to the west and southwest part of the city. We do have a high-pressure zone there, but we don't have service along Poberesney Road. And Mr. Robby can describe some of the other things that they're hoping to achieve over and above benefiting the Aviation Business Park. Why we want to keep it going, even though the county isn't doing their part, we need to, we need to keep going because there's other parts of our water system that need this.
Yeah, I think a big part of getting this Water Main Loop constructed is being able to ensure that we do have adequate supply, not only to the Business Park, the newly expanded Business Park, but other areas immediately adjacent, especially for fire flow for the industries. You know, current service on Ripple Avenue is difficult. I know one of the businesses did in the past about three or four years construct a fire pump to be able to boost the flows and pressures within their building to be able to supply their fire sprinkler system. So, by getting this loop done and providing that additional pressure and creating a new kind of middle pressure zone will increase our ability to provide those fire protection flows in some existing developed areas in addition to providing the needs for the newly expanded Business Park. And as City Manager mentioned, the crossing of Interstate 41 from Washburn over to Poberesney and down Ripple Avenue will open up some ability to expand Water Main Service along Poberesney Road to be able to get a little more service there and hopefully get some additional development taking place in that area as well. So, this does provide some much-needed service area for our water utility.
Okay. Thank you.
So, follow-up to that, Mr. Robby. I noticed that we have, that residents get notified of the construction sequence. It says one week before construction begins. I'm just curious, is there a reason why we wouldn't be able to do two weeks? Because I know sometimes when there's closures with construction and that, folks that have disabilities or need special needs in terms of being able to coordinate with the construction contractors, sometimes it takes a little more time and that...
Yeah. One of the things we do strive to do is we're putting plans and specifications together is find out if we do have any residents with disabilities. And we actually get written right into the contract anytime we have that situation and make special accommodations to address those access concerns with our contractors. You know, generally, it's for road closures, a week is usually sufficient, but we do try to reach out to anyone that we know is having a disability. Part of the other issue, depending on our timelines, is, you know, what we've got written into the contracts right now. You know, I'd have to go back and look, but if we needed to get a little bit more notice, we probably could work something out. But, we are trying to get those persons with disabilities in contact with us ahead of time so we get it worked into the contracts.
And we're always listening because in the, even leading up to tonight, because this item is for special assessment. So, all of the affected parties have been notified already. And that usually brings people out to say, hey, I've got this concern, regardless of what the issue might be. Because things do come up that we aren't necessarily privy to and it pays to know those things in advance. So, to the degree any of the neighbors there, this may not be the best example because this is a little remote, but when we're on Bay Shore Drive, for example, in some of the more residential areas, we really do have to pay attention to those things.
So, is it our common practice then, one week? Or is there a reason why we couldn't build into our common practice too? If it's feasible?
I'd have to go back and look. I can't think of anything offhand other than, you know, the timing of being able to get started. Because it's usually about a week to 10 days between award and getting contracts executed. You know, and so it takes some time once we get our contracts executed to get their subcontracts executed. But, I can't think of any immediate reasons offhand that we couldn't look into trying to change some of those notices.
Do we actually, in those letters, put any kind of language that says if you do have an access challenge?
Yeah. On the typical street reconstruction projects like City Manager mentioned, there are four or five letters that go out from our office. And that is one of the questions we do ask is, you know, if you or any of your neighbors, you know, have any access issues, to please get in contact with us so we can, you know, get that written into the project ahead of time. You know, a project like this is a little bit different. The utility impacts are going to be very short-lived, whereas a street reconstruction project, not only do you have the utility impacts, but then, you know, you're out of your driveway for five to six weeks for paving operations. And that's where it's critical to get that information ahead of time so we can get them access close by.
Thank you.
Just, go ahead.
In follow-up to councilperson Herman's comments, as the former Chair of the County Board's Aviation Committee, I have reached out to the, my counterpart who is now the Chair of the Aviation Committee as well as the Airport Director. And as the past Chair of that Board or that Committee, I find the foot-dragging of the county a little bit concerning. So, there have been, as Mr. Roloff indicated there, we are beginning the discussions.
Just a comment to Mr. Robby's about special needs. I was contacted by a citizen that was in Conif Court for a lake off of Bay Shore. And she uses a walker and she said that they made special accommodations for her very much so and she appreciated it. And she was here at last council meeting and she mentioned it again, just to tell them. Nice was to work with the street engineer, which was Steve Dittner, and a couple other staff people to make sure that she could get out of her driveway and get out from Conif in Bay Shore. So, I know they work with the different people with disabilities, so.
Yeah. I do live on Bay Shore and I've had a lot of positive comments from the neighbors and I think Mr. Dittner, Dittner knows my neighbors better than I do now. So, it's been really a smooth, smooth project. And the person you speak about, yeah, they arranged the neighbors to have a parked car there. So, it's been a lot of one-on-one with the neighborhood, with the neighbors in the neighborhoods. So, it's been a very positive experience for everyone. I wrote it three times. I was writing down, one, two, three. After no further comments, would you please take the roll?
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carrie Seven?
Next, we move to citizen statements to council. Citizens are to address the council only. Statements are limited to five minutes, must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda, are limited to issues that have an impact on the city of Oshkosh, and the common council may address at a future meeting and must not include endorsements of any candidates or other electioneering. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the council? Please come forward. You will need your name and address, please.
Evening. Jonathan Berger, 684 West Fourth Ave. I'm here to address the noise problem from the yard waste grinder and the noise in general on Third Street. The grinder grinds away. Obviously, it's loud. All that little barrier that was put up does nothing for us. There's no barrier behind our house. All that stuff that gets ground up has mold spores, fungal spores. There's garbage sometimes in it. This stuff is not healthy for the neighborhood, plus the noise, the loud levels are so beyond I was hoping that what me and my neighbor had done, we started to put a berm up in the back so we could block the sound. Because the city didn't do it at all, put any blockade. And now that we put the berm in after two and a half years, they're telling us his section has to move because he put rocks. And so, our provided trees up in the air so it would block the sound there. He put it, you know, three feet back. Now, they're telling us that there's a variance and they went and marked it with pink flags. And my brother, who was a police officer while I was at work, he called up for me and he found out that the pink flags were designated for electrical wiring. And they called the city and the city said that there were no electrical wiring plans there. What that's about is to keep that side, or to keep that if they want to ever put a sidewalk there. Okay. So, I removed the flags. He gets a notice in the mail that says he has to move it. And now, we're kind of in limbo. When the guy came back, he put it 11 feet into our property where we have to have the berm built. And so, that's the first thing, you know, could we build the barrier? Could we move it? Could we find something? Could we enclose it? There's a lot of traffic back that we've never had before, the people coming and going, a lot of talking and you hear everything. But, my, one of my biggest concerns is in the morning. And I've been advised that I should call the police every morning when I'm hearing a noise or an ordinance being broken. The city end of it has been pretty good, but the buildings that you sold at the university, they're beeping. It was 5:24 this morning, 5:23 yesterday in the morning. And it, in the past, it's been at a quarter to five in the morning. So, I had called the police several times and I don't know, are they above the law? I mean, should they have been issued a ticket? I mean, I'm not looking for that. All I just wanted to do is be quiet till 7 o'clock in the morning. And that's basically all I have to say right at this point, you know, is there something that you can do for us back there? I've called all the council members, or I called the phone number that's supposed to go to the City Manager and the Common Council. And I was just informed that maybe the council members weren't even aware that this was going on. Because that phone number, for whatever reason, doesn't seem to go to all the people. And you call and call and call and nobody ever calls you back. And then, you're always forced to come down here. And I don't know, I just don't know what to do. I mean, could you help us out?
In regards to phone, all of us have a phone number listed on the city website.
Correct.
That we, and we don't have, is, the council does not have a central number per se, but each of us have a number that we can be reached at. And I do not have any messages or any contacts from you.
Because in the phone book, it says right on there. It's at the Common Council and then it goes to the City Manager. Now, we called that number the other day again and that number's disconnected.
Well, my number is 231-3776 and I return my calls. And I would suggest that you follow up with the planning department related to finding out how berms can be...
Part of the issue with the berm is, part of it has been constructed within the right-of-way. Assistant Director Steve Godey and one of the staff engineers have met with Mr. Berger's neighbor. And the City Attorney's Office has drafted an encroachment agreement that we are in the process of reviewing that would cover the requirements that would govern any encroachment into the right-of-way. But, that is the issue, is it has been partially constructed within the city's right-of-way without any working right-of-way approvals. So, we're working to try and get an encroachment agreement that does not require the immediate removal, but at such time as Third Avenue gets reconstructed or some other time in the future, we may require its removal because it is in the right-of-way.
And, Mr. Berger, we spoke on the phone. You called me at my home. And I was kind of baffled by this phone number that you were referring to also. But, I believe you also indicated that you had called the police department a number of times and they came out and did decimal readings of some of the noise concerns that you had?
They did not do decimal readings.
Oh, they didn't?
We had our own decimal reader.
Oh, I see. I misunderstood that. I see. And so, when you were trying to contact council and City Manager, did you ever get a return call from anyone or get through to anyone?
Never. So, I just thought that everybody was just ignoring us and just trying to just run over us.
Well, thanks for coming and sharing. Hopefully...
Yeah. Mr. Berger, I'd be happy to give you my, I'm not sure what number you're calling. We don't need to get into that. I'll give you my card so you have our number. Because I was made aware of it. Councilmember Pansky had called or emailed me yesterday morning and this is about the email, this is about the message, Mark, and I didn't know what it was about. So, until Councilmember Pansky brought it to my attention, I wasn't aware of it. So, I apologize for that. Certainly, the noise issue the police department can address, but I think our folks are not doing anything until 7 o'clock. They don't start until 7 o'clock. So, it's not us. And if it's the university, if you're saying they're out there at 5:24, police department can talk to them as well.
But, he's saying, or in our conversation, I think you indicated that when you would call the police, there really wasn't like a follow-through after those calls?
There wasn't much. I'm not blaming the police department. You know, they asked me, do I want them to go back? And I said, no, can't you just talk to them so they can get a warning to stop this problem? You know, what is the next step? Then, do I have to demand them that they get ticketed? You know? I mean, where does that...
I'll talk to the chief about it. I appreciate you bringing it to my attention.
Yeah. I appreciate you trying to be a good neighbor and solve your own problem and, you know, work with that. And, you know, you didn't, you didn't bring down the hammer in trying to address it. But, thank you so much for coming and bringing it to our attention.
And thank you. It's just, it's been our family home and it's been, like I said, the noise and that is just beyond belief sometimes with that grinder too. And why can't we shut the thing down just on a Sunday too? I mean, it's all Sunday long. I mean, it's all Sunday long, it's open and why can't we have one day of rest? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council?
My name is Rob Hartley. I live at 1711 Pinocchio Street. For anyone that doesn't know where Pinocchio Street is, it's the entryway to Lake Shore Golf Course, which is why I'm here to speak to you this evening. I've lived there since I bought it for my in-laws about 10 years ago. And my in-laws actually built the house in the 1949 when it, at that time, was a swamp in front. And for anyone that is old enough to know, it flooded continuously. I paid no attention to what was going on and I pay very little attention to politics. I'm sorry, I have voted for most of you, but I pay very little attention. It wasn't until this came up in the newspaper and I saw the prospectus of possibly looking at what to do with Oshkosh, with the Lake Shore Golf Course. I, at that time, started talking to people in the area and started to find out what was going on with Oshkosh and the Lake Shore Golf Course. I decided it was important to talk to the people. I'm not a golfer, never really been a golfer, although it is in my backyard. So I started talking to the golfers and I started talking to the people. I was extremely surprised at the support and the overwhelming support that this course has. And not just as a golf course, but as Lake Shore Golf Course. It's an important thing for people to have. Because of that reason, I decided I would start a webpage, actually a Facebook page. My children showed me how to do it. I've never been much of a Facebook person myself, but they set it up. I was totally overwhelmed. Hundreds of likes from people all over the United States, including people that once lived here, that were children that played on Lake Shore and now live all over the country. Please self-help Lake Shore. What can we do for you is what I received from so many people. I was just, as I say, I was overwhelmed. So I decided I'd go ahead and start some petitions. And I didn't take any out, get them signed. I just made up the petitions, I passed them out to people in the neighborhood. I now have hundreds and hundreds of signatures on this thing. It does not say about Lake Shore Golf Course. What it says is it says save Oshkosh Parks. Because not being a golfer, I just, I think of it as a park all the time. It is a city park. I'm a sailor. I've been sailing out of Miller's Bay since the late 60s. I've had a boat there since the 80s. There's probably about 24 of us to keep our boat there right now. If you members of the city council are ignoring 25,000 rounds of golf, if all of a sudden Merckham Marine decides they want a new place to practice with their boats and Miller's Bay looks great, my 24 boaters don't stand much of a chance to keep it there. It's a park. They're all parks. It is our responsibility and your responsibility to be custodians of these city parks. It's something that we all should cherish. And of course, I decided to do this and as I said, I was totally overwhelmed. All of these signatures here, hundreds of things on my Facebook page, I decided, you know, people were personally connected with, with Lake Shore Golf Course. So I started to ask people about it. I found out some things that I was totally amazed at. It originally was in 1899, it was Algoa County Club. And about 20 years later, it became part of the city of Oshkosh as a city park because the fathers of the city at that time decided golf was an important sport, it was an important activity to provide for the citizens. Did you know that in the 1930s, President Franklin Delano Roosevelt actually felt as though that Lake Shore Golf Course should be included on the list of the CCR, right while with the Tennessee Valley Authority that saved the water in the central part of the United States? They put people in here, they put money in here to rebuild Lake Shore Golf Course, to upgrade it for the people. Even your own predecessors in the last couple of years and the last decade decided to spend thousands of dollars to upgrade it, to change the water system and make it one of the finest golf courses, from what I understand, in the valley and one of the very best golf courses in the, in the state. And especially in the spring, I guess the flowage and the water is extremely important there. And your predecessors decided to spend a lot of money to do this because they felt as though golf was an important activity for the people in the city and that they should be doing this. I'm coming, I'll be there five, five, I got you kiddo, I got you. Couple of other things that I did notice when I was there is the number of people that have come out of that course. I learned about Johnny Revolta. I had never heard of the person before. Apparently in 1930s, 1940s, this was the Jack Nicholson of the time, top mounting winner, seven times Ryder Cup champion, PGA champion. He started as a caddy at Lake Shore. People like Bill Detloff. Anyone knows Bill Detloff? His father was Hank Detloff, the original person there. Bill is a master professional golfer now. He's written three books on golf. He grew up on the golf course. Mike Spazinski, professional at Firestone, Akron in Ohio. Ted Donker, professional at Brown Deer Course. These are all people, the young men that grew up on that course. These are people that their parents could not afford to belong to the country club, but they were able to make a career out of golf because you and we offered the citizens an opportunity to play this sport. We offer a lot of other opportunities in this city and golf seems to be an important one. I said, I'm a sailor, but I see thousands of people that really believe and are passionate about this particular course. Not just any other course. Purchasing another course and offering golf to other people is not at all what they're referring to. They are referring to the love and the passion that people have for Lake Shore Golf Course. That's why I think I was so surprised at all the signatures and everything that I got. Now, I did receive response, Mr. Mayor, there's a very nice letter that we received that you explained to, on my Facebook, posted on our Facebook page here, that explained exactly what it was. Mr. Herman, you've spoken with people, quite a few of you actually have spoken with people and said that we're not interested at all. The only thing that I question is that if I'm going to sell my house or refinance my house, I pay for an appraisal. But I don't pay for an appraisal if I have no intention to do anything. So why is the city doing a feasibility study with thousands of people here, thousands of dollars, to find out if we're never going to do anything? I've used up my time already. I thank you so very much. And first of all, I'd like to sign on with those girls for the non-smoking thing, by the way. That is a fantastic idea. Thank you for your time and thank you very much for your service, everyone. I know this is a thankless job and I've gone over my time, so I'll do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council during citizen statements? I see no one coming forward. We'll move on to consent agenda. These are items of a routine administrative nature that are voted on by the council in a single roll call vote. Staff recommends approval of all items. Any member of the public or common council may request that an item be removed from the consent agenda for discussion. Two, report of bills by the finance director. Three, approval of cash report from June 2017. Receipt and filing of Oshkosh Public Library Minutes from May 25, 2017. Receipt and filing of Oshkosh Public Museum Board Minutes from May 30th, June 1, 2017. Receipt and filing of common council minutes from May 9, 23, and June 13, 2017. Seven, receipt of claims filed with the city's insurance company, A. Dawn and Rich Dennis for alleged damages to vehicle from asphalt. B. James Lang for alleged damages due to a new water main installation. Resolution 17-357, approve engineering services agreement with AECom Technical Services, Inc. for design services of the Parkway Avenue watershed detention basin, $78,650. Resolution 17-358, approve engineering services agreement with AECom Technical Services, Inc. for Keenest and Paulus Quarries landfill gas extrication system design and bidding services, $175,200. Resolution 17-359, approve amendment to engineering services agreement with AECom Technical Services, Inc. for environmental and engineering services related to the former Keenest and Paulus Quarries, $35,950. Resolution 17-360, approve amendment to engineering services agreement with AECom Technical Services, Inc. for construction, monitoring, and documentation services for Marion Road Water Tower replacement, $37,687.50. Resolution 17-361, award for bid for public works contract number 17-19 to Vinton Construction Company, Inc. for Aviation Business Park Water Main Loop, $1,598,113.98. Resolution 17-362, approve purchase of road salt for winter 2017, 2018 for the Department of Public Works through Wisconsin Department of Transportation from Compass Minerals, Resolution 17-363, award bid to Casper's Truck Equipment for Service Body with Crane for Wastewater Treatment Plant, $57,979. Resolution 17-364, rescind resolution 17-308 and 17-309 for professional services for playground design installation from Menominee Park, Sea, Sand, and Sailor Land and Fugelberg Park. Resolution 17-365, approve professional services proposal to Lee Recreation LLC for playground design and installation for Menominee Park, Sea, Sand, and Sailor Land, $122,500. Resolution 17-366, approve professional services proposal to Lee Recreation LLC for playground design installation for Fugelberg Park, $120,098. Resolution 17-367, accept drainage easement of 751 South Waschburn Street. Following resolution 17-368 through 17, 373 are special events, all that will occur in 2017, so I will not keep reading special event nor 2017. Resolution 17-368, Oshkosh Zoological Society to utilize Menominee Park for their eagle extravaganza, birds and brews at the zoo, August 19. Resolution 17-369, Friends of Oshkosh Community Media, OCM, Inc. to utilize city hall and parking lot for their Oshkosh Media 30th Anniversary Celebration, September 9. Resolution 17-370, rethink to utilize Menominee Park and city streets for the Rethink Addiction Run, September 9. Resolution 17-371, UW Oshkosh Police Department and Special Olympics, Wisconsin, to utilize city streets for the Run with the Cops 5K, October 5. Resolution 17-372, Oshkosh North High School Student Council to utilize city streets for the Oshkosh Homecoming Parade, October 6. Resolution 17-373, Reach Counseling Services and Christine and Domestic Abuse Services to utilize city streets for the Take Back the Night Event, October 18. Resolution 17-374, and the next resolution, 374 through 379 are for block parties. Resolution 17-374, Dale Allen to utilize Bay Street between Otter Street and CP Avenue to hold their neighborhood block party, July 29. Resolution 17-375, Barbara McLean to utilize Rugby Street between West 11th Avenue and West 12th Avenue to hold their neighborhood block party, August 5. Resolution 17-376, DeShawn Rogers to utilize Stillwell Avenue between Wisconsin Street and Beach Street to hold their neighborhood block party, August 19. Resolution 17-377, Lisa Eldring to utilize Nevada Avenue between Wisconsin Street and Jackson Street to hold their neighborhood block party, September 1. Resolution 17-378, Susan Ames to utilize Walnut Street between West New York Avenue and Short Street to hold their neighborhood block party, September 2. The final block party is Henry Johnson to utilize Surfack Street between Pleasant Creek Drive and Rebecca Run Street to hold their neighborhood block party, September 9. Resolution 17-380, approve appointment to the following boards and commissions, Redevelopment Authority, Sustainability Advisory Board, and Museum Board. Resolution 17-381, disallowance of claim by State Farm Insurance on behalf of April Chase. The final resolution on the consent agenda is resolution 17-382, approve special Class B licenses and operator licenses. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address any of these items on the consent agenda? I see no one coming forward. We'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Councilman Pamell Ray.
A question for Mr. Rabie. Resolution 17-362, approve purchase of road salt for winter 2017, 2018. On our packets, there's a reference to an additional option of an additional, in addition to the 2,000 tons, an additional 400 as an option. Can you just explain why we would have that separated out and?
Yeah, the way the DOT contract works with their road salt supplier is local municipalities that are participating in the DOT contract, there are three areas that they commit to. One is committing to an early fill, or an early season fill, which usually takes place in October. Our salt shed's currently full, so we did not need an early season fill. So then we committed to 2,000 tons of salt to be purchased throughout the season. The DOT then allows up to a maximum of 20% of optional or discretionary, and it's 20% of the early season and the guaranteed fill. So 20% of our 2,000 tons would be another 400 tons that we would be allowed to purchase under this contract. So a maximum amount that we could get is 2,400 tons.
But that 400 would be an option like towards the end of season if we ran low or, are you saying it's ahead of time? Because I was asked whether or not, why wouldn't we just order, you know, 24,000, or, I'm sorry, 2,400 tons?
Because we're, you know, we're guessing at what the winter's going to bring. You know, if it's a winter like last winter, you know, we're not going to need 2,400 tons. Last winter, we started the season with the salt shed full. We used about 2,000 tons, which was what we guaranteed, so we did not have room for any additional, so we did not take the optional fill. But if we're in a situation where we have used more, then we would look at taking the optional to have our supply, you know, at a certain level of coming out of the winter to make sure, you know, because right now we don't have to get the early season fill and that could be a challenge sometimes, so.
And we took the option last year, but we didn't need it, so we had savings, correct?
Yes, we, we always fill out our, when we're, when the DOT's requesting the bids, they're asking, okay, how much are you guaranteeing? And then you're allowed an option of an additional 20% of that. And we're not obligated to take that additional 20%. So if we come through the winter and we get our guaranteed fill and we're full, we'll say, sorry, we're not opting to take our optional. But if we have a terrible winter and we use everything we've got plus the 2,000 tons and we need, we've got the option to get that additional 400 tons at the guaranteed rate.
Thanks for sharing that. And then I do, one more, Mayor. This is a question for Kathy Snell, I believe. On the block party, does special events even review block parties or is that only, is that only police when those applications come through? So this would be regarding resolution 17-376, the Rogers Block Party.
So typically if the timing isn't such that we can get it to the special events review committee meeting, that happens once a month, I will send an email to the committee itself and ask them if anybody has any issues with the block party. If I don't get a response from that, then we bring it to council.
And the only reason I ask about this one is apparently there were some concerns noted on the application by Mr. Peter and Nick Lang about making sure the neighbors don't use some vacant lot or something that's adjacent?
Yeah, so the Stillwell is right behind a few businesses in that area. And so I have actually reached out to each of those individual businesses to make sure that they're okay with the block parties.
Oh, this was your notes, not the applicant's?
Correct.
Okay.
So my notes, I've reached out to those individuals, individual businesses to make sure that they're okay. Stillwell Avenue was a site for a block party last year, the same individual had done that. So I have not gotten a response. Everybody was okay with the block party.
Other than the use of this other?
Correct. They have one vacant lot and they don't want it utilized due to liability issues, of course.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks.
I just have one, one question, Mr. Olaf. 17-364, on the purchasing part. We have a little better check and balance, I hope, in the future, so we don't have this kind of problem. You know, it's, it can happen, but I think when you notify a company that you're going to be purchasing from, then a week later you notify them, that's kind of a little egg on the city's face. So I hope we have a check and balance.
We've talked internally about that. Thank you for bringing it to my attention.
Thank you.
Other council members have any comments or questions before we take the vote? Would you please take the roll?
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carrie Seven?
There are no items removed from the consent agenda, so we'll move on to new ordinances. The first two, there'll be no formal action taken on the ordinances this evening, but they are ordinance 17-383, modify parking regulations on New York Avenue. Next, we have ordinance 17-384, designate Nevada Avenue as through street at intersection with Evans Street and prevent Evans Street stops, close perents. Ordinance 17-385, designate stalls in CP Avenue parking lot as leased parking and prevent staff recommends waiving the rules and adopting on first reading. and perenns staff recommends waiving the rules and adopting on first reading. I don't think there's anyone in the public that would like to speak to this. We will need a motion and a second to waive the rules.
I'll make a motion to waive the rules, but maybe I think we should hold these parking stalls for Winnebago County hostage and just leverage to get the taxiway.
Yeah, go.
Put in.
Is that an amendment?
A friendly amendment.
So no, I would move to waive the rules on the first reading, for acceptance on the first reading.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Would you please take the roll?
Pansky.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried 7.
Bring us back to ordinance 17-385. We will need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion from anywhere in the public? Bring it back to council for discussion.
The point I just want to make is in the staff memo, it just says that this lot is very underparked and there will still be ample stalls available after the conversion. So we're not taking any parking away from the general public for this.
That's great. They're pretty underutilized over there.
Would you please take the roll?
Pansky.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried 7.
We have three new resolutions. The first is Revolution, Resolution 17-386, approved development agreement with Annex 71 LLC for redevelopment of the former Lemaco property. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this resolution?
Good evening. Attorney Russ, Rep., 217 CP Avenue, Oshkosh. I am the local counsel for Annex 71, the developer on this project. First of all, my client and I would like to thank the council and city staff for accommodating a very tight timeline on this project. In order for this project to be viable and be completed by fall of next year to rent to students, it has to close by this week, and the remediation and site work has to start the following week. So we told staff that at the outset, and everyone really put in an extra effort to get things done quickly and efficiently and get us to this point. So we appreciate that very much. Secondly, I'd be happy to answer any questions council might have regarding the project.
May I ask, what would happen if the remediation did not begin next week?
The critical thing is the construction has to be completed, and there's very little time in the schedule for any sort of delays. And in addition to that, there's some private financing involved that would potentially go away if the transaction doesn't close this week.
Thank you.
I see no other questions. Bring this back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Davis, you're already moving up the microphone.
Yeah, I was just going to say, Mr. Davis, if you can just give us the highlights of the, or we've read the memos, if you can just highlight for the general public what the city is doing and that the agreement is structured as a paygo in such a way that the exposure to the city is minimized and.
Absolutely. Number one, the applicant is only receiving 75% of the tax increment, which is kind of a change from the last two or three that we've actually processed through. The 75% is the, kind of the baseline that we work with, so that 75% actually gets this project done and does get the rate of return up to the point where the developer feels comfortable with making that kind of investment. You mentioned the paygo. The way the paygo works is that the developer gets none of this money unless they actually perform and create the value that eventually turns into property taxes that gets paid as a development incentive on an annual basis. So if the developer doesn't perform or doesn't have the value, those numbers don't come back to them as well. The city's still saving 25% for our costs, specifically administrative, and we've got two cul-de-sacs and a Riverwalk connection to build. We'll do that only when the money's actually created within the TIF, so the city won't be borrowing any funds to do those projects sometime in the next 12 to 13 years when the TIF is projected to actually terminate, which is much earlier than the last two or three. We'll have enough money to make those improvements to the tune of, I think that was $500 and some thousand worth of improvements. So we'll be looking at having that cash available sometime in the future before the project, the district actually terminates. So this TIF application is more similar to what the application, the TIF policy that we set more than a year ago when it comes to projects, that they're at the 75%, and we're not paying any upfront costs, and it will be terminating much sooner than 20 or 27 years. So it's kind of the, in the sweet spot, I think, that the council was hoping for when we actually created the original policy.
Thank you.
Mayor? Mr. Davis, this developer agreement also includes some land swap regarding the water tower, which is a pretty unique item to have into a developer agreement. Do we have a timeline for when we want to accomplish these things, both on the developer's end and on our end?
Yes. In general terms, the developer can only get it once the city's existing water tower has to be demolished.
Because they have plans for that moving forward as well.
As part of a stormwater management pond, exactly. So they'll have to wait until we're done with that, and that, backing that up kind of depends on when the new water tower is actually completed, which backing that up depends on when the paint is actually dry, is my understanding. So it's kind of a moving target. That's why I put in the memo that it's probably going to happen sometime in 2018, largely because of the timing for the water towers. And then on the DNR side, the remediation side, DNR has to be satisfied that both the parcels have met the requirements for the cleanup, so that we want to make sure we get the DNR sign off before that swap actually takes place as well. And just to describe it a little bit, the water tower is kind of a little notch in the side of Lemaco, and it doesn't blend itself very well to the redevelopment of the site. So it was suggested by city staff early on, I want to say years ago, that to the Lemaco owners that if they'd ever want to consider redeveloping, the city would consider moving the water tower to the north and east of that site, which is kind of the northeast corner of the Lemaco property, so that that would give them a more compact, developable site, rather than having that notch kind of in the middle of it. The Annex people, I think, like that idea, and it helps the stormwater management because you have, stormwater naturally drains to the lower part of the lot, and the lot that they would actually have is kind of the highest part of the lot. So that would make their stormwater management that more, that much more challenging to accomplish. So still, we'll receive as much land as we have right now for another water tower 75 to 100 years ago, when our grandchildren have to worry about that type of thing. So I believe that's the timeline for a future water tower.
If that does change, if something happens along the line, do we just, you issue an amendment to this developer agreement, or is that?
We wouldn't issue that. We'd come back to the, the Development Agreement amendment would come back to council if the land swap didn't actually transpire for something like that. And there was also one other little sliver of land that the RDA owns. That's, we think is old railroad property that the RDA will be acting on at their July 31 meeting, and that was also part of the original plan for, that's a little remnant that the RDA has no need to own and really needs to be turned over so it becomes taxable property, and the RDA won't have to maintain it any longer.
Well, thank you.
Just, Councilman Paul Mary?
No.
Well.
Actually, it's.
It's you.
Thank you, Mayor. I spoke with Mr. Davis at great lengths today, and I also had the opportunity to speak with Kelly as well. So a couple of things that I want to say, first of all, is I really do like the project. I love the project. I think there's a lot of pluses to this project. The thing that I'm having a little bit of heartburn over is the actual developers' agreement. I would say literally 98% of the agreement I'm fine with. But the two areas that I do have concerns on, and this goes back to two weeks ago, or the last council meeting that we approved the TIF, which was overwhelmingly passed through the council, is that, you know, I did have some concerns on the soft costs. And those are things that are very, very tough for a council to know, or even staff to know for sure, because we don't have the intimate details of that. And so we have to basically take what we get. So the two, the two concerns that I have is, one, with some of the concerns I have regarding that, there is no look-back provision. So you're correct, as far as like the length, 75%, 13 years, love it. Because we've had so many TIFs that are, you know, go beyond 25 to 27 years. The big concern that I have, and I see both sides of the argument, is that, you know, there's 2.5 million that's accounted for or is allocated for soil remediation. And I don't doubt that. The challenge is, is that we have pretty much, with the other developments that we've done, to my understanding, based on our conversation, is that we've tapped out WEDC and DNR grants to even try to apply to that, to bring that 2.5 million down. So what I want to make sure that council is aware of is that the 2.5 million, you know, we're saying, you know, it is a paygo TIF as Mr. Peck had talked about, and that's, again, another big plus. But we're paying 5% on that 2.5 million back to the developer. So over a period of time, that 2.5 million then generates, what is it, about 1.3 million in interest? And, you know, they're saying we're essentially paying the interest rate that they would pay, you know, if they had to borrow from a bank.
Which they have to do upfront, because they'll upfront those costs.
Right. However, you know, in understanding and knowing the projects that we have and the magnitude and the size of the project, typical commercial loans, rather, would be us as a municipality, or the developer generally is about 3%, max 4. So I don't agree that we should agree to 5, and especially, you know, with no look-back. That concerns me, that they don't want to put in a look-back. It makes me skeptical, I guess. I'm, you know, I'm not saying, again, you know, but where I'm going with that, with this, is that, you know, we've approved a number of TIFs now going out, and those payments, those payments that we make, that comes out of our operational budget. I'm so sorry. Operational budget. And so with the TIFs that we have that are longer, we're not seeing the tax revenue in to support any additional TIFs. So I'm, I'm looking at the longer picture, not just today. Because if it's today, and what the project is and where it is, it's very exciting. And the other, the question that I have is, you know, when we borrow through general obligation for something like this, you know, that is, which I don't know if it applies to municipal, but it's, it's, it's tax, there's a tax advantage to it. When it's private in this, in which the developer's for profit, is there a tax detriment to the municipality?
Not that I'm aware of.
I don't know.
The, I did have an opportunity to talk to Finance Director Larson earlier today, and we do account for the TIFs in their own TIF funds. So we almost segregate those funds from the operational, our CIP dollars, so that I don't think she sees an impact on the operational side or the CIP side. And they will be accounted for in the specific TIF district fund.
Correct. But that's, that's the other thing, which, you know, this is an opportunity for us to also look at things for, you know, our city manager and our staff to look at, you know, next year. Because, you know, we do have a TIF that we've kind of called our, you know, cash cow, you know, that we're closing out. We do have some underperforming TIFs. And how does this look, and what does this picture look like, going out 5, 10, 15 years from now? Because you may not be here, the current council may not be here, city manager Roloff, you know, may not be here. But I just want to be very cognizant and make sure that we're not making the same mistakes. So I mean, I'm, like I said, I'm in favor of the project, most of the developers' agreement. So I would, you know, at some point, if there's any other discussion, make an amendment.
One thing to follow up on the look-back, that's something that we didn't have before until we got these applications at the 90% level. So that's something we introduced more recently.
Correct.
So that's why the original application, say, if you apply for 75%, I didn't want to spring a look-back clause on them, because it's never been part of our policy or even in the application at this point, so.
I agree.
I think that would be a really good discussion to have with our TIF workshop that we're going to talk about later tonight, about putting look-backs in every project if you, if the council sees fit.
Right.
But we've never done that specifically, never taken action on that, except on those 90% plus.
You're correct.
Pagos.
I'd like to follow up, Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm going to echo what Councilwoman Osby has referred to here, because I was also surprised to see, as I started digging into the developer agreement, this look-back being pulled out. I think, you know, it was my understanding that that was our safety valve as we were going with our TIF projects. And I was really excited about the short term, the 13 years, only 75%. The community benefit and all of the things about the project, too. But if it's, if it's a trade-off, that, that safety valve would be removed, it makes me a little less excited, or actually significantly less excited, as well as that interest rate. And I guess my question would be, if that interest rate was not 5%, and they're able to get the 3% to 4%, and that difference, does that push them into a higher, higher? If I recall, our workshop that we got instructed that some of those assumptions were based on these interest rates. So I guess, yeah, I'll be interested to hear what some of the other council members' thoughts are on that.
Mayor. Deputy Mayor Herman?
Mr. Davis, I had, first off, we don't have a policy on look-back. That's something we have to add now. So whether they, we put it in now, we can, but that's part of our workshop, I think, too, is looking at our current policy and maybe is, Mr. Davis said, put it on all our projects. So right now, we don't have that. It's up to staff to put that in there, unless council directs staff. But my question, too, is on the 5%. Where do we, where do that 5% come from?
That's based on the research Ellers has done in the past. They look at the borrowing costs that the applicant has to go through, looking at what kind of mortgages they have to receive. And based on their review of the application, they thought 5% was the appropriate number. Let's run up real quick. Let's see. That's not a, that varies by project. The, Mr. Teus from Ellers did send me an email saying that the developers' banking relationships, financial position, and project risks would all factor into the actual rate. But they have assumed the 5% rate based on their application and what they've seen in the market at this point in time.
Okay.
Alan, how does that compare with some of the other development agreements we've done in the recent past?
It's, it's lower than the Granery. It's the same as the Arena. However, the Arena had the potential to escalate higher than 5%. And those are the more recent ones off the top of my head. 5% is actually on the low end.
I think Beach in Washington was at least 5%, if not more.
Which one?
Beach in Washington.
Beach.
Did you double-check those?
I didn't have an opportunity to check those. I'll turn to the back of the room and see if anybody had a chance to look for those.
But it's based on, it's based on analysis of their cost of borrowing, and that can fluctuate depending on the nature of the project, so.
And the nature of the borrower.
Yeah. Looks like. Looks like Mr. Ref may have some information, adds up the council.
Go ahead.
On the interest rate issue, I can shed some light on that. The financing is in place. I cannot tell you what the actual interest rate is, but I can tell you that it is much higher than what's been suggested here. The actual rate is something slightly less than five percent, but when you factor in the borrowing fees, and the delay in getting the TIF payments, not starting until 2020, the effective rate of interest is probably five percent, or slightly above five percent. So, that is a realistic rate of interest. In fact, it's very close to the actual rate of interest on the developer's loan. The other thing to remember, again, is that interest is being paid out of the TIF fund. So, if those revenues are not created by this development, the interest rate doesn't get paid along with the other things. As far as the soft costs, the numbers, as the development agreement indicates, are not to exceed numbers. If the actual numbers are less than that, then the amount of TIF that will be paid to the developer will be less than that. So, those are estimates. They may be on the high side, because that number can't go up, but it can go down. So, that's where that came from. As far as the look-back, honestly, I don't think my client would have any problem with the concept of a look-back. They believe the internal rate of return numbers that have been presented. The problem with that is, we have a closing Thursday that's contingent upon having a signed developer's agreement. That's why we're here tonight. And drafting a look-back period, I talked briefly to Mr. Davis about that today, and I know Lynn Lawrence, the city attorney, can back me up on this. That takes some significant drafting, and some time, some back and forth. And I started out tonight by saying thank you for accommodating a very difficult timeline, and unfortunately, we don't have the time to change that. It's just the eleventh and a half hour here, and, again, the look-back period only comes into play if the rate of return on the project is above some level. And I understand on past projects, that's been fifteen percent or twenty percent. What's being forecast here is eleven-point-four-five percent, which is significantly below those numbers. In addition to that, normally, the point where the look-back occurs is ten years into the project. And on this project, the TIF should be pretty well near completion by the ten-year point. So, and again, I understand the concerns. I think, you know, that's good government to ask those questions, but, you know, those are the facts, and that's the situation. And the other thing is, again, this is a process, and the city hires Ellers as its financial consultant to review the applications, to review the numbers, to review the projections on internal rate of return. They did that, and they supported this application, said it was appropriate. So, that's what your experts said, that was what was negotiated, and we hope that you'll approve that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just, one comment to Mr. Ref's comments. I would agree with Mr. Ref. The practical side for us is, if we, even if we included a look-back provision, the purpose of a look-back provision, as we were talking with some of the other ones, when you're going out twenty, twenty-seven years, purpose of it is to look back, to see if we maybe should inch that payment up. The reality is, if it's so good that it would warrant a repayment, it was probably going to be close to being paid off, because we're assuming a thirteen, maybe fifteen-year payment. If we do a look-back at ten years, and it's doing so well that we should change the terms, the terms are probably going to be such that they're going to be paid off, the TIF will be closed. I mean, if you run the, if you run the math that way.
But that doesn't preclude us from doing a look-back at the halfway point, six, seven years, right?
But you really need to, these folks have to get their self-grounded, and six, seven years for a project of this nature doesn't give them a lot of time. So, you could do it, but you're, they don't even have their boots on the ground. They're still working on it. They don't get the first tax increment until 2020. So, look-back after seven years would be, be a long time before we would practically be able to do it. They're going to have it paid off by then, if they're doing, if they're doing that well to warrant some change in the terms, it's probably, with the short term we have, it's probably going to get paid off by then.
To that, to that comment, we can look at any TIF at any time, right? For how it's performing, how it's not performing, we can make changes, right?
No, we don't have the remedy. We could look at it any time, but we don't have the remedy that you're proposing. That would have to be part of a look-back provision.
Okay. So, in other words, we need to tighten up our policy that includes, just what we talked about earlier, and when we get to that part of our workshop. To put it in here now, it's kind of detrimental, I think. I think it's, going down the future, we need to be there.
It's not a, it's not a policy now.
It's not a policy at this point. We can direct staff to add it.
The look-back wasn't removed, it didn't belong in there in the first place. I know that's a man.
We didn't have a look-back policy, correct?
Correct.
In our TIF.
Correct.
We've never had it. And when we get to these bigger TIFs, or the ninety percent, you felt, or your staff felt, along with probably city attorney and finance director Larson, to make sure that we look back. But we don't have a specific policy. So, to the timeline, I think it would be detrimental to now try to put one in there. I think going forward, we could then have it as a policy. That way, going into any agreement, any project, the developer's going to know, whether it's a ten-year project, fifteen-year project, thirty-year project, it's going to have a look-back.
And we'll be able to put it in our policy and the application, so they know it upfront, and that doesn't exist right now.
I think that, to me, is the proper way to go at this point.
I would agree.
I agree. If I may make one last comment.
Ms. Allison Asby.
Thank you. I appreciate the comments that Mr. Ref made, and I do, and I want to be accommodating. The challenge that sometimes we have, though, is when these projects come through, and they kind of come through like a jet, there's very limited time for us to really sit back, take a look, and maybe discuss some of these things. I don't remember seeing the developer agreement in any other packets prior, so we just received it Friday, which actually, I was on vacation and didn't get it back until, you know, Sunday night. But, you know, can work quickly. So, you know, in order to be, to be able to maybe talk about this, maybe even two weeks ago at the TIF, even, you know, or to include in the workshop, had we had known what was maybe going to be in the developer's agreement, would certainly be helpful. But as I listen tonight, and I completely understand, and I appreciate it, it feels like it's being jammed through, and there's just something about it that feels uncomfortable. And so, if council is telling me that they're not willing for, at least for me, to bring forward an amendment, I cannot support it. But it's not because I don't like the project, and it's not because of the majority of the developer's agreement, so I do want to make that clear.
One comment to your comments. I think during the workshop, we have to give specific direction to staff, as far as timelines. If we desire two weeks, or two days, or a month, that should be part of our policy. Everyone knows, these are the rules of how we go through this. If we don't like to get it on a Friday, and make a decision by Tuesday, then we have to tell staff, we need it, whatever the time, whatever timeframe is, that we feel comfortable when that's realistic, that should be part of the policy.
Respectfully, Mayor, I believe we have asked for that in the past, and this has been compared specifically in the project plan to recent TIF applications that we approved. Those all had look-backs. So, this was a bit of a surprise from staff, that it was not, as was described, fully.
At the same time, the gentle ladies were concerned about the length of time related to TIFs that were previously approved. That is why the look-back clause was included, as was indicated tonight, because of the length of this, which previous discussions were concerned about the length of the TIF, and now we have met something that is approved, is, for lack of a better term, approved of length, because, and now does not, does not require the look-back, and as Counselor Herman points out, that is not a part of our policy. So, it's kind of like finding something to pick at over here, even though that there's an, that the problem is addressed, and then at this point, trying to pull something that was over here into this. The thing is, is this project, as was indicated, is on a tight timeframe. Yes, this is coming forward rather quickly, but sometimes that's how things go. If this is not approved tonight, there is the very distinct possibility that this project will not happen, or be pushed off another year or so. And then at that point, then, will the developer want to continue doing this? Will we whatever? I am comfortable with what has been set, and that we need to come up with the policy, and that's what we need to have, is a policy to bring these forward and to work with, rather than try and do things on the fly, and make amendments at the last minute. And so, that's where I'm at. I'm in support of this. I think that everything has been addressed, and that this ninety-eight percent, or these little biddies there, yes, it does cause an issue, but it's, like I said, it strikes me, is previously, there were these other things that were, that were causing issues that were addressed, and I just don't understand where the arguments are coming from.
Ms. Allison Asby?
Thank you for your, for your comments, Mr. Peck. I think we've worked long enough together to know that I pick and choose my battles incredibly carefully. So for me to bring something forward, there's been a lot of thought. And it isn't picking just to pick at something, it is a genuine concern. So these are concerns, you know, talking to finance, these are concerns that I've talked to planning before, and, you know, and I do want to congratulate staff, that, you know, with the PEGO, and with the financing, like with remediation, and like we've seen with some other TIFs, I mean, that, that's a creative way to see something work, and to have progress in the city, so I'm not trying to take away from that. But we did have a TIF workshop, to Mayor Cummings' point and to Tom Peck's point, and staff did a wonderful job of educating us, but there was zero time to have any discussion. And one of the things that I did want to talk about, is that regardless of the length of the time of the TIF, I do think, especially if it's a developer that we've never worked with before, don't have any history on, and we only can really evaluate what we have on a piece of paper, which may or may not be a hundred percent accurate. You know, I do think, moving forward, that a look-back, no matter if it's fifteen years, or thirteen years, or twenty-seven years, I do think is appropriate, because I think it is that safety net for us and for the taxpayer. So, you know, I'm sorry if individuals feel that this is a personal attack, or a nitpick, but it is a genuine, genuine concern.
Are there any other comments or questions from council?
I just had a comment. I just feel like these are professional people that are putting these plans together, and it's kind of like you compare it to go to a used car lot, and they're jamming something down your throat, like this deal is here today, it's not going to be here tomorrow. I mean, it just seems like there could have been a lot more professionalism, giving people time to eat this and understand it. You know, so, I mean, I just, I feel like there's kind of a dropping of the ball on that. Because, I mean, to say it, to show up tonight and say, got to do it tonight, otherwise we're not going to get it done. This land's been ready to develop, probably for years already, people could have came forward a long time ago. So I just feel like it just seems very rushed. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I will be supporting the agreement. I think we've had adequate time to look at this. I just, I just think that it's inappropriate at this time to, to bring that, an amendment forward. You know, we get this information on Friday, and I understand that it is summer vacation, and we all have things that we want to do, but this is a job of ours as well. This was something that could have definitely been brought to their attention, along with your fellow council members' attention beforehand.
And I would disagree to that, Ms. Pantsy, because we can't talk to other than one other council member.
It could have gone to staff and, and changes.
It did. It did.
I received nothing on that.
Because I can't talk to you if I.
But if there was a change to be made, staff could have definitely done something. It could have been brought forward before, you know, we're supposed to vote on this tonight.
In one and a half business days.
I definitely agree with Councilmember Herman, that we should address this at the appropriate time, which would be at a workshop, and address this as a policy issue.
Fair enough.
One thing Mr. Roloff has mentioned to me, in previous conversations connected to TIFs, and I think Mr. Davis was part of that, too, is bringing both the TIF and the developer agreement forward together. Now you want to chew on some fat, that's even more to look at. So I sometimes appreciate, one, the TIF first, and then the developer agreement, that gives us a little more time to digest everything. So I do think policy's the way we got to go on, on all of this. And I'm going to support it. I think they've done their due diligence. I think, you know, sometimes I wonder about Ellers, because they seem to not, sometimes in some ways, maybe look at the city's best interest in some ways. I think that they kind of just kind of roll along at times. And I know there are other organizations out there that we could use, but they've been consistent, they know the TIF policy's better than probably everybody, so in that case. But I do think that this is a great project. It's a project that's needed in Oshkosh. I think it's going to improve our housing for our students that go to school here. It could help Fox Valley Tech. They're not limited to just students at UWO, they could be students at Fox Valley Tech. They could be students that live out of the area that go to Manasha, and be willing to commute, because it's better housing than what they have maybe up there. So I think it's an opportunity to really lead, in a sense, of a new housing project and concept, and they looked at Oshkosh. They could have gone anywhere. They, the gentleman, last time he was here, talked about, they looked at Platteville, Platteville had housing, they looked at Whitewater, they had housing, Oshkosh didn't. So there's competition out there, so an opportunity to take care of a blighted property, put something exciting right next to the university, I think it's a, it's a great opportunity. So I'll be supporting it.
I totally support this, and I have a great deal of faith in city staff and in Ellers. This is their business, they do it day in and day out. They know their business. And the thing that's really important to me is, we, in a short amount of years, we have taken what was once the heart of the industrial core, the city of Oshkosh, became blighted. Idle factories, idle this, idle that. We have transformed this area on the north side of the Fox River, it's transforming on the south side of the river. We are changing the whole complexion of the central, the central city, and we're doing it rapidly. And my background is, things happen fast. You have to be ready to analyze things fast and make decisions. When the opportunity's there, take advantage of it. So I think, yeah, TIF is a way of doing business in this world today. If we don't do it in Oshkosh, the city down the road, across the state, will do it. But it's, the TIFs are transforming this city, and a lot of vision. And for those of you who have lived here any length of time, you've seen the changes to this community, and you've heard the comments from both citizens and visitors, or people who grew up here, left here, maybe come back occasionally, they're in sort of disbelief that this is Oshkosh. So I think, you know, this is one component or part of a puzzle to continue transforming the central city of Oshkosh. So I will support it. Ms. Mary?
If I may ask, our city attorney, practically speaking, if this were amended to incorporate that look-back, what is your estimate on how much time that would realistically take?
It would have to get done before that closing.
But I mean, if they had to reschedule their closing, what would we be looking at?
I don't know that that closing can be rescheduled, so I wouldn't ask to have that done. We would have to get it done, so that it could be done for that closing, which would be extremely difficult.
Staff's not going to be able to get it done. I'm just going to, staff can't get it done.
And we're amending something on the fly. We're operating by exceptions.
It's not just a matter of taking some other look-back provision and cutting and pasting into it. There's more to it than, than doing that. If it was that easy, you know, that'd be one thing. I wasn't aware there was a closing on Thursday, but we brought this forward in keeping with current council policy, knowing some concerns council have had. If we want to take a look at policy, then we absolutely should take a look at policy. If we want to take a look at policy, then we absolutely should take a look at policy. But this agreement, I think, has gone through a good deal of vetting. If you take a look at the provisions about the land swap, that was very unique to this one. And we insisted that that be in there because we want to make sure that that land gets swapped because we won't have another chance for another 75 years. If we don't do it now, we lose that chance. So we insisted that that land would get taken care of. So it isn't that we are trying to rush it through. We worked very hard to get the best deal for the city. The land swap is a big deal down the road. We will be very thankful we did that. It's one of the lowest rates that we've done on a Pago. We're still learning about Pagos. And when you think about it, the life of Pagos in Oshkosh have only been about five to seven years that we've actually done Pago TIFs. So we're still learning along with other communities. The look back provision is a relatively new thing. Staff recommended it because we thought it was a good idea and we still do. If the policy required it, if we get better direction from council, I shouldn't say better, more specific direction, here we want look backs and up to that point, we don't. But if we set a line and say, this is where we want look backs, then if council says, well, we want to go back to these other ones, well, then move that, move the requirement for look backs back farther. You can do that. That is absolutely a policy decision for council. And I think it'll actually make our job easier. So there's nothing wrong with having those things in there. But we negotiated and worked on an agreement that I think is going to work very well for us in the long term. And I really believe that. And I wouldn't bring something forward if I didn't believe that. And I, and I know City Attorney Lawrenson's been working very hard in having that land swap. And there was a different twist that we haven't done and the other provisions in there. So we're working, we're learning. And I think Lers has given us their, their best recommendations based on what the going thing is in TIFs these days. But can we come back in six months with better ideas? I certainly hope so and I think we will.
Lers is the ones who actually came up with the look back provision originally because we'd never used that before until we got them involved with the more recent 90% Pagos. So they're the ones who came up with the idea, so we've incorporated that into those 90% agreements.
With that said, I've made a note in terms of when we get down to the discussion on TIF workshop, time needed to make council comfortable. That's what I, that's what I read into, and you have to.
Yes.
I want council to be comfortable with every decision they make. But I believe this one, we've done a good deal of vetting and I feel very confident in making the recommendation to you.
If there are no further questions from council, would you please take the role?
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
No.
Allison Osby?
No.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carrie, 5-2.
Next is Resolution 17-387, request from Oshkosh Farmers Market to waive special event fees. Is there anyone in the public who would like to address this resolution?
Good evening. I'm Michael Cooney. I'm the board chair for the Oshkosh Farmers Market, 5391 County Road K. We're here this evening to really suggest that we are a community event. But we also would like to ask the council to probably defer consideration of our request to August when you will be considering the special event fees and have our conversation within that conversation at that particular point. At that point, however, we'd like to suggest to you that as a community event, we fulfill a unique function in the community of, if you will, we're the town square and we contribute greatly to the community in a way that no other event probably does. We exist only to run the farmers market. We are funded totally on vendor fees and whatever contributions we receive from the community. Our vendors are very price sensitive and many of them are very small farmers. They do this as an occasional business. So we have to keep our fees the lowest possible we can in order to fill the market. When I walk the market, the two blocks, I see empty spaces. I don't want to see ever empty spaces because that means our littler vendors have dropped out because of cost considerations. And when that starts happening, it affects the nature and the culture of the market. So we're very sensitive on the special event fees because that added another burden to us where we run a break even budget, where it exists for the good of the community, and we hope to have further conversation with you in August.
Thank you. So are they withdrawing this request for action tonight or are they suggesting...
It's up to us. They've just asked that it be delayed. It's essentially what I was suggesting in number three, delay action until special event policy is reviewed. So I think, and Michael was aware of that and so he asked me to forward that to council. So that's essentially what he's asking at this point.
I guess we'll need a motion though in a second, won't we?
Before we do that, you know, I had hoped that we would have that special committee's report on our special events fees that we've been working on, Mr. Mauer and that group. But it appears that we won't have that in time to consider...
Yeah, it wasn't, this wasn't the deadline. The deadline was by the budget workshop and we're going to be, I'll be getting their information next week.
So...
Well, it's got to come forward first to make an amendment.
Right.
So bring it forward. Mayor, just bring the motion forward.
We'll need a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion to approve at this point, Resolution 17-387, to bring it forward so we can withdraw it.
Yes.
It has to come forward.
Second.
Then we have to make a motion to withdraw it.
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion to withdraw Resolution 17-387 for consideration future.
We've already got a...
First of all, we had a motion on the floor and a second, so that opens it up for discussion before we do anything more.
We have a motion in a second.
Now, to discuss this item and I'm making an amendment to that, which she can do right away.
Staff, what do you think?
Yeah. He's within his rights to do it.
He's within his rights.
So is there a second to...
Second.
All right. The gentleman's comments are heard. And I'm not trying to be the certain thing in a punch bowl. But, you know, I do understand that, you know, that there are these exceptions and I'll say this about my concern about waiving special event fees, is that we do have a special event policy. And when we start to deviate from policy, that begins a slippery slope. Because the farmers market is here and yes, you have a unique place within the community. But I would be willing to bet that every special event within our community has a unique quality to it, has an impact on the community, is of interest to the city, has some cultural or historic significance, is a tradition, there's a tradition of the event in the city. These events go back multiple years. We consistently hear that related to Sada stays. So my concern as we move forward to this is that we need to make sure that we're not managing by exception and that we have a policy and that we develop, that when we develop a policy, that we live by that policy. And again, I'm not, that's where I stand on this. I'm not making a judgment on what's here, but I think that that is something that we all need to consider. Because if you have a rule, you have to make sure you enforce that rule because once you don't enforce the rules, then the rules are not worth having. And we all know that there's a budgetary issue related to special events. And many people on this dais have raised their concern about our budgetary issues related to special events. So just, we need to keep that in mind moving forward.
Are there any other council comments?
Just a clarification, Mr. Herman, if you could just clarify your...
I'd like to amend Resolution 17, or withdraw, have Resolution 17-387 withdrawn.
Until another time.
Till after the council receives the workshop on the special events.
Okay. Does that make more sense?
And I will second that. It's essentially laying it over.
Laying it over till after we have the workshop and the information that will be provided to council.
And that's what you seconded, right up? Because you had seconded it.
So we have a motion in a second to lay it over, to lay it over until after we get the report from the Special Events Committee.
Correct.
We have a motion in a second. Do we take the role now? Would you please take the role now?
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carrie, 7.
Next is Resolution 17-388, order assessors' plat for 1300 block of CP Avenue in Perrin's petition received in favor of assessors' plat closed Perrin. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this? Please come forward, we'll need your name and address.
My name is Danae Steele, 428 Ninth Street in Nina. I own the house at 1334 CP. I'm the one that started all of this. We bought this house in September and rented it to a friend to live in. And one of the, one of the improvements that we wanted to do to the house was to fence the yard. My friend has a small grandchild and a dog and we wanted to have a safe place for them to play. And so I applied for a permit and was turned down. And that was the first, that was the first step in finding out how completely irrational the property lines are on, in this section of the block. I hope you have the map in front of you. I did not know that I was going to be the only person speaking at this. So I did not come with all the maps that I could have brought you. But as you can see, hopefully, the property lines have nothing to do with the existing yards that everybody has built on presumed were theirs for probably over 100 years. So we've got, so there's a couple of important points here. First of all, nobody on that street is going to be able to sell their house until this is resolved because no title company is going to issue a title when they, and now, now that everybody knows what's going on, you have to divulge that when you go to try and get a title for your, for a house. So anyway, we're all going to have, it's basically going to be impossible to sell a house until this thing is resolved. Second of all, I can't fence my yard. Third, the house to the east of us has applied for and received a building permit and is currently in the process of fencing across what I thought was my backyard. I am not going to do that to my neighbor. I don't think that's the way neighbors should treat each other. But that leaves me with a small wedge of yard that I can now use and my neighbor on the east side trying to take over half of my yard, which as you can imagine, I'm not very happy about. So when this, when I first found out about this issue, I called a surveying company. I, I've had multiple conversations with Jeff Now and Planning. And it became apparent that everybody knows that this is a problem. This block has been a problem for, well, well over 100 years and that it's been actually very well known. Like I would say, I have a house at 1334 CP Avenue and we have this problem, they'd say, oh, that block. So this is a problem that's going to be a perpetual problem for the city until it's resolved. Everybody's plots are, everybody thought they knew where their land was. It turns out that for, unless somebody knew, I didn't, certainly didn't know, I don't think anybody else knew until I discovered this, it's going to be a perpetual problem until it's resolved. So I think the clear way forward is to do a plot assessment and make the property lines match the existing lines of use that have been there for a very long time. And nobody is losing any part of the yard that they thought was theirs. But what it does mean is that I'll be able to fence my yard, the neighbors at 1326, I believe, want to sell. They're planning on moving and they're not going to be able to until this is fixed. So...
May I ask why the property owners believe that the city should pay for that $3,000 and are they, have they discussed the idea of splitting this cost amongst the properties?
Well, at this, at this point, I was only able to get signatures from four out of the seven people in this proposed area. So obviously the person at 1338 who's fencing across my backyard doesn't want to participate, nor does the man at 13, who owns 1334. He says that although he knows he'd never be able to use the land, he, and never knew it was his, he doesn't want to give it up unless the city makes it. That's what he told me. The guy at 1330 is worried about the shared driveway between 1326 and 1330 and it, he didn't want to sign because he's worried about losing access to his driveway. So I can't even get agreement from everybody on the street. So my point was, I think this, I think the city does have some responsibility towards this. What I said to Jeff Now is that either the city has, I mean, I know in, I know now that these lines were drawn, I think, back in the 1880s or 1890s. So, so they were drawn back then, but meanwhile, the city has allowed buildings to be built right across them. Now Jeff says that when he went back and looked at those, those building permits, the proposals that they were given had the buildings, in this case, the garages placed differently on the property. But apparently nobody ever went out and inspected and said, hey, your garage lies right across these property lines, you can't do that. Nor have the fences. I mean, there's, there's existing stuff there that's been built since 18 whatever. And I think the city does have some responsibility. The city has known about this problem for a long time, has allowed these things to happen. And I don't think that this should be solely the responsibility of the property owners. That being said, I am actually willing to pay my part. I really want this done, but I can't speak for all of my neighbors.
I see Mr. David.
We did have a discussion, staff had a discussion with the neighbors, had a neighborhood meeting. There was some concern about the costs of it and the burden of paying for it. We were just able to identify other funds that were available. We were able to work to keep the costs down. So in the interest of trying to resolve the situation, staff identified those other funds. It is something we could assess for.
And I spoke with Jeff Now about this when this issue first arose, and I'm going from memory now with the maps, I think this has been wrong since the 1850s.
But...
If 1850s, 1860s, it's been wrong all that time.
It's not public, or I mean, it's not back to council, but in your memo, it says that state statute says that the governing body pays for the costs. It's in the memo. And then CD, BG grants are going to pay for it, so...
We've been wrong since the 70s.
Yeah, let's just get it resolved.
I think that's an excellent decision.
And Ms. Steele, we've talked previously on this. I really respect the fact that you've been diligent and persevered on this because I know it's been very challenging and I appreciate staff's time working with you to try and get it resolved.
Thank you.
So thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. And if I can do anything else to help, I'm willing, so...
And Ms. Steele, I've had my ear twisted by Mr. Will Borget.
I'm sure you have. Good.
And I, as I indicated him, let's get this in.
Yes, he's, he's been very helpful and cooperative. And he was sorry he couldn't be here, but his brother is visiting from overseas, so...
Yep.
Yeah.
Mr. Davis, you want to add anything to this?
I don't need to add anything. I'm just here if there's any questions.
Any further...
This is the equivalent of playing King Solomon and this is something that we have to do.
I would venture a guess that an awful lot of the city is sort of like this because homes were built before cars, then cars, then garages are just sort of put in the backyard and there's, I think, a lot of, not the city's fault, that's just the evolution of how cities develop, so...
Assessors' plat, they come into these type of circumstances just as, I haven't been involved in this, but you know, the first time I really got involved in this was talking to staff about the memo and these are usually the circumstances that happen when you, and the only real good solution is to do an assessors' plat. We end up putting the bill because you can't get them to agree on the property lines, you're not going to get them to agree on the dividing up of the costs.
That's what our mistake for 150 years.
It sounds like we made the mistake two years back, not we personally, but we didn't follow up on some of our inspections of things that were placed. So it does seem like we do have responsibility to.
If there's no further council discussion? Oh, we have, oh, I need a motion in a second.
I would move for the approval.
Second.
Any more discussion? Would you please take the roll?
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Pack?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Urban?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carrie Seven?
Next, we have council discussion, direction to City Manager and future agenda items. The first is the budget workshop, which begins tomorrow, July twenty-six at 5:00 PM. Mr. Roloff, would you, like to add anything?
We're just going to be giving you some projections on next year. And you know, a lot of discussion you've heard with the state and what may or may not happen. Those are the things that we'll be talking about, giving you some number projections as well as assumptions that we're going to be putting into that. So it's a little bit more of the same. So I think I've asked, a couple of council members have asked me, but it's same script, different year, so.
It'll be five to seven, correct?
That's our goal.
Are we televised, televising it?
That is a televised workshop.
And I haven't, the last I saw was last week. Are the boys and girls in Madison even talking to each other?
They're still working out the transportation budget, but things like the likelihood of personal property, personal property tax going away is very high. I'm not exactly sure how that solves the state's budget since that's really impacting our budget, but I editorialize, I apologize.
Well, what would be the impact of the loss of the personal property tax?
It depends on if, there's supposed to be a backfilling, and that, we'll talk about that tomorrow night in terms of the backfilling. So if they backfill it, we'll be okay in the short run. In the long term, those backfills can wither away. And we'll have all of that and more cheery news.
Yeah, and you're throwing some other home rule.
So much for local.
In there. For local control.
And then we'll have another cheery budget workshop also on August twenty-ninth at 5:00 PM.
Also televised and open to the public, too. The public can come here if they want. Then we've talked about this before, but the follow-up TIF workshop to be determined.
I know August is really tough. You know, we're putting the budget workshop on the fifth Tuesday because we have a fifth Tuesday. But this is not something that you can do, given the depth of our discussions and the passion that you really recognize you want closure on some issues. We need at least a couple hours to do this. I guess, look at your calendars, tell me what you think is going. There is value to doing it that last week of August because it's a fifth Tuesday month. We're not preparing for a council meeting, nor are we wrapping up from a council meeting. I don't know if you want to do a back-to-back night. You're doing it tonight and tomorrow night, so it's not unprecedented. But you know, everybody's got a lot of things going on in their schedules, and I just want to respect that. But if you want to do it the twenty-eighth or the thirtieth, we could certainly have that discussion. Twenty-eighth or thirtieth of August.
I'm open. What say the rest of you?
Yeah.
August twenty-eighth?
That's doable.
That's a Monday?
That's a Monday?
Yeah, I can probably get, I'm scheduled to work till seven, but I can get, I probably wrong that.
So we'll tentatively set it for Monday, the twenty-eighth at 5:00 PM.
Yep.
Something messes that up in any of your schedules, please let us know. Okay. Thank you.
Next, we have direction to staff on council chamber modification and revise council rules following workshop and council chamber environmental review.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I just ask it from the memo that Mr. Urban and I wrote. We're looking for the items that are on the second page of the memo. They're all lettered A through I. If you're comfortable with those, tell me you're comfortable with them if you want to talk about them. Obviously, A is the biggest one, it's the council rules, and that's also attached. And we numbered some of those things. We listed everything that the chief, for example, had put in as far as prohibited items. And looking around the table, number one might be something you may want to have a talk about, otherwise you're going to be very thirsty. Because I assume that that's one of those issues you got to talk about because of food and beverages and things like that. It is your council chambers, it's your call, but those are the things that we're looking for direction on. I think firearms and ammunition might be a little easier to talk about, but you got to, you got to go through all those. And then what staff did, we did a couple of things. One, and as we discussed logistics, under the rules pertaining to addressing the council, the council currently has a rule that if you want to amend something, the public can speak on it. I certainly respect the public's, you know, interest in commenting. My experience has been that typically, the council is making an amendment because they're being responsive to a comment that they've already received. The logistics of having people register on an amendment right there on the floor would just make it impractical. So that's why staff's recommending we take it away. But we're also, and each of the items facilitate public input, speaker, registration form. We kept it as registration because technically, the council doesn't have to take that public input except at a public, a formal public hearing. So it is essentially a request. I know that issue came out there. As we looked at it, we felt it is a request, and you can deny the request if you so choose. Either the person isn't following proper decorum, or for whatever reason, you could deny the request. So we left that as a request. And we made similar type of rules throughout that document. So looking for some direction, if you're okay with the language, then we can go on. But if you want to suggest anything, it's entirely up to the council.
I think you take one out of there, at least food and beverages.
Yes.
I think a few people come right from work and may want to sneak a candy bar in or something while there's discussion and something to drink. I think all the other ones obviously make common sense.
Is that good, is that a consensus, the council?
Yes, yes.
One, two, three, I'll just count the bottles to count the votes, okay? And we're going to bring this all back. I mean, I joke, and you said votes, but in reality, we have to bring this back for formal adoption. We'll clean it all up, take it, all the italics will be gone, all the strike-throughs will be gone. It'll be in your final format, but I thought this was a good working document.
And we talked about it, and I think you might have it addressed, but you know, you're right. You know, we talked about something up here, someone gets an idea out in the council chamber and they want to speak to council. We should allow that, you know, they didn't sign up to speak on that item. I don't think it happens that often. It's usually when it's a big, big item that the community is very involved in.
And we, we really wrestled with that issue, and that's entirely up to you. Because there, every argument that you're coming up, I hope that we went through those and agonized with them ourselves. But that's really up to council on how they want to do it.
I just want to clarify something, Mr. Roloff. You mentioned keeping the word "request" in. I'm seeing that we did change it to "registration" and not "request," unless I'm missing something here.
Oh, let's see. We did have something in there in terms of, oh, under number four, Roman numeral four, the next page.
I see.
Using the "request to speak" technology. Oh, no, that's for council members.
That's for council members.
That's for council members.
But for public, we had changed on the webpage, I think we made a revision to suggest registration as opposed to request for the public signing up. But we would still be under the request as council members when we're in discussion.
Yeah. Well, maybe it was more about the council can accept or deny based on their discretion. But we kept it at registration form because that will help. The improvement there is going to be great because Ms. Ubrich will have, if somebody kind of mumbles their address, we'll have it, we'll be okay. Anything else in there in, under the rules? Because otherwise, we can move on, because there's several other things we need some direction on. Is that generally okay?
Yes.
Okay. Then, if you go back to the memo, the new consent procedure would be, we'd be scrolling the agenda at the beginning prior to the meeting even starting so that the public will be able to see that. And then the consent agenda such as tonight would be, the consent agenda is items one through thirty-three. And as it says there, council or any member of the public, and it really works, you just say, I want to pull an item, it's okay. Don't even, it's not even a debatable item. You just pull it off, and then those thirty-three, and if there's one or two pulled, it's thirty-one or thirty-two items. You do the thirty-one or thirty-two items, even if you have a simple question, don't hesitate about pulling it. It's okay. So that's the procedure that, that I think was discussed at the committee level. And then the on-screen graphics, see, we'll get those scrolling before the meeting so people will be able to see the agenda and whatnot. Staff podium, department head floater assignment. James isn't getting too excited, but you know, he might be up there some nights. But for example, tonight, it would have been appropriate to have Mr. Davis up here just because the lion's share of discussion was going to be him and going to be that department. So that would make more sense. Audience seating, we just have everybody behind the speakers since the podium's there, we're going to lose a row of seats. Signage about prohibited items, we'll make sure food and beverage is taken out. The officer seated, that's council's call. I think the consensus was that the council did want an officer present. We'll have a quietly present over near, over behind the speakers' podiums so that the officer has a good view of the area.
And this isn't an on-duty officer? This isn't above and beyond?
This will be an on-duty officer.
Correct. Thank you.
Good point. Thank you for pointing that out.
Can I just make a quick question about the prohibited items? The firearms and knives and all the concealed type weapons, those aren't allowed anywhere in the building. I mean, it would be a double posting. I mean, is that going to cause confusion?
Chief thought it was just a good way to reiterate that those things weren't allowed. Because we don't necessarily have a security system. They ignore it at the, at the door, which maybe somebody uses that as a defense. I don't think it's a very good defense. But if they didn't happen to notice it and they get in here, then during the preamble, which is also there, it will be restated. So the people will know that it'll be posted at the door, so people will know those things. So, let's see, oh, going back to, let's see. And then the preamble, which is that second page or the next one, those are the things that the person given the preamble, it'll more than likely than not be the on-duty officer who's here for that. Just going through all those things. And that'll change based on how things, technology changes and things like that. If we have a glitch on the computer, we have to be ready for a glitch on the computer, and we'll have forms available. So if the computer's down that night, the officer will say, we'll have forms. So that's pretty much what it'll say. So it does reiterate some things, but sometimes that repetition is good. So those are basically the things we have. Is there any additions, corrections?
We'll read the preamble again?
It'll likely be the officer on duty, but it could also be any staff member present, could be somebody from the clerk's office. Depending on, you know, if the officer gets called away for something, can't be there, we'll get a staff member up there and just do it for the council. We'll get that done before the council convenes. But logistically, the meeting technically won't get gabbled by the mayor until like 6:02. Because the first thing that, at six o'clock, the public will see, here's the agenda for tonight. So they'll see that. And then once it's had at least a one or two scrolls, then Jake or Scott will give the mayor the green light that it's completely scrolled through, and then the mayor can gavel the meeting open. That's a little different because then technically, we're starting at 6:02. But those are the issues. Anything else that you could think of?
Looks good.
Okay. Then we'll have this back in a council rule. Some of these things aren't council rules, but I want a council to be comfortable about them. So we'll bring the rules back for the next meeting for adoption.
Speaking of the next meeting, there is something in there about in order to be considered a valid absence, I will remind staff and the mayor that I will be traveling on business the week or on the August eighth.
Okay. And we'll move on to citizen statements to council. Citizens are to address council, only statements are limited to five minutes must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda, are limited to issues that have an impact on the state of Oshkosh, and the common council may address at a future meeting, and must not include endorsements of any candidates or other electioneering. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address the council? I see no one coming forward. We'll move to council member announcements and statements. There is one thing that I've added, and that is, a national night out is August one. I believe ten of the thirteen neighborhood associations are planning an event. I'm asking, could we on Oshkosh Media post the different associations and the time of their event? Because they do vary from neighborhood to neighborhood.
Right.
Oh, sure.
Mayor, I have one thing that Mr. Muller, who left, wanted me to bring up briefly. Tonight's the third of six weeks of concerts at The Leech. Tonight was bad, is Bad Habits, they play till nine. It's already five after nine, so it's a little late. But there's food trucks there and Verb Credit Union is the sponsor, so we'd like to encourage all our citizens to come.
Yes.
It's five after eight.
You said five after nine.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you're right. They play till nine. It's five after eight, so if anybody's out there listening, they can still get to The Leech Amphitheater and.
It's free, correct?
And it is free to the public, correct? There's a lot of activities, family event. So if you didn't make it tonight, make it at the next one. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, now it's time for City Manager announcements and statements. Mr. Roloff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kind of got alluded to earlier in the meeting, update on special event fees. The, we had assembled a little group of stakeholders, I believe about eight or nine people. They will be presenting some information, be next week, on their recommendations, and staff will take those under consideration. I think they've done a pretty thorough job of going through the fees. I think everybody understands each other a lot better than they had in the past. You're not going to see exactly what was presented to council, which I think is what everybody was hoping for. And I think that everybody who's involved recognizes those things. So, and I'm not going to dwell on those. Once I see those recommendations, I'm going to be forwarding to you pretty soon. Probably not the eighth because it'll be literally a week before the meeting. But once we get moving on those things, I would not be surprised if we can get it going on the twenty-second of August. Or at least, it's out there on the table that you have it. And then as we talk about the budget, you'll have that information in hand. And some of it's going to be phasing in because there's some changes that they're proposing to. But getting the methodology set for the future, and I think that was really the important thing to do. And everybody seems to have general agreement, not unanimous, but general agreement on the methodology.
And I think I brought it up to you, Mr. Roloff, earlier about as part of our policy is to have all those fees and everything out there. A lot of ordinances already have them that way. I think it would be important so that especially any new events coming in, they know exactly what they're going to be paying for, what the cost is going to be. So if it's an officer, they know exactly what they're paying for, squad car and gas and everything, fire department, ambulance, paramedics, those types. That way, they, knowing going in what their budget could very well be like based on what their event is.
Okay, so just so I understand then, this would be the report that we would be getting not in our normal Friday packet before that Tuesday meeting on the twenty-second. We would get this more in advance of that, correct?
As soon as I can get it. Yeah, that's why I don't want to do it on the eighth because I just don't think that'd be enough time. And even when it's put on the agenda, we're looking at this taking effect January one. I don't think we need to rush through this thing. I think you can, you know, maybe receive it, get some questions, see if there's additional follow-up. Because you have to absorb this thing, and I want you to, I want you to have time to look at that. But we wanted to get to you for budget time, and I think we're generally there. We'll be a few days past the budget workshop, but we weren't planning to talk about it tomorrow night anyway. We got way too much on our agenda for tomorrow night. But you'll have enough time to chew on it and ask some good questions.
Will that also, last year, I believe, we got a report post-mortem. Will that also, last year, I believe we got a report, post-mortem report on SADA's days. Will we also have something similar?
I have not spoken with the chief yet about that, but that's pretty standard. I think they do that debriefing, so I'll just make note of it and make sure that we pass it along to council as well.
Should probably include the Parks Department on that as well.
I think they all get together on those things. I'm not part of those meetings, but I think that's a pretty annual event, and Ms. Snell's gone, but I think she would, I think she coordinates that.
And if I could ask as well, it was brought to my attention that we do operate a special city bus during this week every year for EAA. Could we also see included in that comprehensive document, like how much, how many riders utilize that during the event and what the income or the revenue is?
I don't want to muddy the waters on what the council's direction is. I'm more than happy to get you that information, though. That's, it's good information and it's a good thing to look at.
Transit Advisory Board usually goes through that in their August meetings.
Yeah.
Oh, do they in August? Okay.
Yeah, because technically, that's a route by, because it's...
It is an EAA route, yes.
Yeah, because it's federally funded, this has to be a route. So we have a route that runs one week a year, but we have a route. So you'll learn a lot. I know Ms. Pansky has been following that for a couple of years now.
Maybe during budget time, you can share that.
So that's the status report on the special event fees. Couple memos in your packet. One is, got a lot of discussion. We had to use our services from UW Milwaukee to do some archaeological investigations. There was something over at, on Bay Shore. So, and we, anytime we know it's a sensitive, an archaeological sensitive area, we have to bring somebody in. But when we found things, we had to use the services, and we had to amend the agreement because they actually looked at something. So...
And we will get a report once they've done their studies, so...
Yeah, but it's going to take a while for them to do their final report, but project is continuing. It wasn't stopped as a result of this.
It was the high point of the whole project.
It got people, yes. There's a lot of bad jokes, and I just want to move on to the next topic and talk about a boring truck.
Wait, before you do that, City Attorney Lawrence, so is there some kind of like legal requirement that we do a certain process when there's human remains discovered?
Oh, God, yes.
And this is to allow us to comply with that?
Okay.
Yeah, that's...
The project stops.
And that's why having these people on contract, they can get there, because if they're delayed and we don't have a contract, we got to negotiate a contract, that project's down for the duration. So having them there, they swoop right in, they're pros, they know exactly what they're doing, and address the site pretty well.
Yeah, during, we bring them on board to do initial reviews, and then we have some provision if they need to do fieldwork. Obviously, they had to do a lot more fieldwork than there was room for in their original budget. But, yeah, they were onsite already monitoring the excavations, and as soon as anything was found, you know, they got additional staff onsite immediately. You know, their supervisor from Milwaukee came up right away, and they kept the project moving and, you know, got us the appropriate agreements that we needed to execute with Wisconsin Historical Society, and they got us everything very quickly so we could get it through and keep the project on schedule.
I think the one there, there were four people there sifting throughout.
Oh, once they find it, they got to start sorting and sifting. So anyway, so that's that one. Cooperative purchase for pickup truck for inspections division, our weights and measures. That was done through the state contract that we have. Little update on Opera House Foundation, the different groups, the Landmarks Commission, excuse me, and the Grand Opera Advisory Board have both looked at it, and we've worked out an agreement to work on the details about where and when the chairs are going to be taken out. We're going to store them. It just makes more sense, they belong to us, so we're going to make sure we have storage for them. There's no place at the grand that they could store those chairs anyway, so we're taking that on. And then there's, reading an update, just some recent updates, but that's going well. We signed the contracts with the contractor. I assume that they began yesterday.
I don't think contractors started work yet, but they're in the process of mobilizing to the site. And I know they've called in their Diggers Hotline Locates, and we've been getting some questions from some of the neighbors about that, but I don't believe they've actually physically started work yet, but they're getting mobilized in.
Okay. So that's moving along, and we're pleased with that progress. And then lastly, we have the second quarter strategic plan update. We only put in the executive report, the executive summary, and we can do this however the council wishes to do this, but Ms. Jenks, our HR generalist is here, and Courtney is the one who cracks the whip on departments to get them to get the reports in. The summary you have, I want to let Courtney do it. She stayed all this time, I might as well let her have some fun with this. Go ahead, Courtney.
So you'll see with this report, again, it's high-level overview. It's, the first part on the second page when you turn it over, shows the overall plan, that 90% of it is on track, and then 3% of it, the whole strategic plan is actually completed. And then it kind of shows you also on the right side, all the items that are on track, what's in caution overall with the whole plan, as well as overdue items within the strategies and actions. And then as you go down, each of the goals are separated, and they're specifically going into how many are on track, as well as how many are completed. So you see, we're only into the second quarter, so if you see a 0%, don't be alarmed, we're only in second quarter, and this is a two-year plan. So not everything is going to be worked on now. There are items that are going to be taking place in 2018. Any questions?
On the items that you specifically have no update, is that just because we haven't even began a certain portion?
Correct. On some of the items, they have not started, so there is no update. Rather than just putting no update, they just had no update in there. So that's why it's labeled as no update.
Okay.
And then, yeah, that's correct.
Okay. So, all right, no, that'll work. Thank you.
So far into this first year of a two-year strategic plan, is there anything you need from council at this point? Some gaps that you may have seen, something that council could take a little more look, see at, especially with the budget coming up?
Do you want me to go over the caution items?
Sure.
Courtney did a real nice job of...
I guess that would be, yeah.
The more complete report, we're going to provide this to you, but for purposes of the agenda, I just wanted to give you the overview.
Right.
Because it's the first time under the new software program that we have that allows us to do the reporting. Couple items that are in caution or a little bit behind. The implement the recommendations of the 2016 parking study when applicable and budgeted. It's only 25% complete. There's, we're still waiting on the signage, and if we're going to do anything after signage is implemented. Well, we're still in the final stages of doing the signage. I think the bid met just last week on this.
It was approved.
So we still have to order the signs, but in terms of from the policy end of things, you'll recall that the council decided not to do any on-street metering or pan display type of thing. We didn't resolve that issue. We just said, we're not doing anything. Let's see how the education goes. The education doesn't start until the signage starts, so just letting you know that there's going to be a little delay there.
Do you anticipate that signage being in this fall?
Yes. Yeah, I believe it will be. In fact, that's, we were getting into the nuts and bolts of the details of the signs One of the other items that we haven't done yet is encourage at least one departmentally hosted open house annually. I would be talking to department heads about that in terms of how we want to do that. Obviously, that takes a lot of staff time and whatnot, but that was something that was suggested in the course of our strategic planning, so that's something we're going to work on. Another item, clear water initiatives, some pump discharges, sanitary lateral policies will be necessary. We're only 30% complete on that, so that's one of those things that we still have to bring forward to council. That's a staff thing that we got to bring to you. Feasibility of improving the community's broadband capabilities. This was in our infrastructure area, and there was some discussions that the university was talking about improving our broadband capabilities. There was a community planning group, and that group is kind of withered away. It was over at the university, so we have to circle back, and they've had some new people there, and Mr. Fitzpatrick was part of it, so I guess he's going to give an update on that.
I'd be happy to give a little more information on that. Our planning department was involved in that, the university, the school district. We talked about it initially as, from a community development perspective. The cost is extreme, of course. You know, we don't believe we could be a Google city. We think that there might be other cities that might be more desirable for Google than us. Not that we wouldn't appreciate that kind of attention, but, so the focus really went more toward how we could assist the school district. There was some dialogue about their recent upgrades, what they require, the use of technology for some of their students. There was some concern because some of the students didn't have the financial ability to have broadband in their homes. They were coming and staying in the parking lots of different places to try to get their schoolwork done. So, you know, it's not our responsibility from a school district perspective, but from a community perspective, we've had some discussions, I've had some discussions with Tony Newman to see if he could get in contact with the school district to provide some information about what we, the information we did receive from that initial meeting involving UWO and a private consultant. So I don't want to promise anything, but we're hopeful that we might be able to at least convey those ideas to the school district and see if we might be able to assist them in some way, at least by passing on the information. But that's really the status of this group right now. That's all, the further it's going.
So, I'm confused. So are we saying that we're asking the school district to do this instead of us, or that we want to be partners in that, or what?
No. The initial group came together from a community development perspective to say, hey, the community could really benefit from having broadband across the entire community. When we looked at that, although it was a fantastic idea, the feasibility of it was not possible. But one of the things that came out of that initial group was some dialogue about the circumstances with the school district. And there weren't all, there weren't school district members present at that meeting.
Oh, I see.
So we thought that we could take that information, connect with the school district, share the information that came from the consultant, and see what we could do to try to address this problem, but we haven't had the ability to connect with them yet.
Yeah, I'm not sure what's necessarily going to happen with that one. That's a very ambitious program. And when we were talking about aligning our strategic plans, we talked about a lot of stuff with the school district present, and this never really came up. So I guess we got to just see how important it is to them because the stories we're hearing, the needs are more on the education side. When you hear stories about some of the high school students in the parking lot of West to get their, so they can hook up their computers, there is an issue for the community as well, but it's something that we're going to have to take a look at as a, as a community. What, I don't know necessarily what role we have, but we'll certainly be at the table and be part of the discussion. And then the last one that is, and those are the ones that are falling behind. All the other ones are doing very well, so we're focused a little bit on the negative stuff, but I think it's good to point those things out. The last one is under improving neighborhoods, the objective about increasing encouraging investment and maintenance of properties. And one of the strategies is develop an administered targeted micro grant program. We're still working on developing the program. That was part of the staff. When we lost Liz, that was a project she was working on. So we do have a new principal planner who started just yesterday. You'll be meeting him in the next couple of weeks, but I don't know if he knows he's working on this project yet, but he's working on this project.
He does now if he's watching.
Yes, he does. Everybody else knows, and they'll tell them. So those are the major ones, but, you know, overall, I think, you know, we wanted to just show you what the software is capable of. There are these same type of reports for each of those individual strategies, so it's not just how we doing overall, it's how are we doing on these individual strategies. And the departments are asking questions, well, what can I do even beneath these strategies on this report that can we dig deeper so we can say, you know, Caroline, you're responsible for this, Jake, you're responsible for that, so individual employees can see what their role is in achieving these larger goals. So I'm excited about it. I think 90% on track is very good, and that's probably right now, early in the process. It's that, as we get into 2018, if I'm doing this a year from now, the right one, the percent completed, that's going to be a lot more important, and that's something we want to take a look at. We're wrestling with how do we deal with those ones that are going to be kind of one of those that you're on the treadmill all the time. A good example is INI. Even though we're making great progress with INI, it's almost like that's something that you're going to be doing year in, year out. So how do you count that is completed when you're going to be constantly on that treadmill?
Well, what about a percentage of how many get done in a calendar year?
Well, those are things we can talk about. If we give ourselves an annual target like that, then we can say, we're doing that, but it is, but those are the things that we'll always be doing that type of thing. So thank you for that. You got it. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, council.
With that, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
All moved.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Adjourned. See you tomorrow.